Chat.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. It is 7:00 PM and it's time for our regular meeting on this day, Monday, May 6. Please stand with me for a moment of silence. Oh, before we do that, Madam Kirk, please call the row.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Member Bokey has been excused. Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Lorisella has been excused. Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whelan has been excused. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, if you will, please rise for a moment of silence and a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have several proclamations that we are honored to present. And first of all.
Madam Deputy Mayor, I have a point of order.
Mr. Branstadter, if we can wait till we get to that one, I will follow your instructions, okay? Before.
I would rather make my point of order now, if you don't mind.
Counselor, recognize, Councilmember Branstadter.
That we have, the agenda today has seven proclamations that are all council proclamations. However, there is a proclamation. Building Safety Month, and that it does not have the concurrence of all council members as is required for a council proclamation. And I'd request that you remove it from tonight's agenda until that can be resolved.
Is there a second?
Man, I don't believe that.
Point of order requires a second. It only requires you to make a ruling.
Okay, thank you. The decision is mine to make, and I suggest that we remove this from the council agenda until a later date.
Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council, or Acting Mayor Moss and members of the council. I understand that Councilmember Branstadter has brought a point of order to remove something from the agenda. I believe that that does require a second in order to carry. Otherwise, you would have single council members being able to just remove things from the agenda at their will. That is, that is not in order, in my opinion, as your parliamentarian. There should at least be a second.
So is there a second? Hearing none.
I apologize for not sticking with the theme. The theme is if there's not a second, the motion dies.
Madam mayor, respectfully, I did not make a motion. I, I had a point of order that talked about that there was, that having this item on the agenda is procedurally incorrect, because it is, it's on the agenda as a council proclamation that is not concurred in by all council members, which is the standard for a council proclamation. And, and so it's, it's, so the issue is not whether you move to do that. It's a question of that it's, it's an improper proclamation. And then I'm asking you to rule on that.
I am not familiar with that being a point of order. My understanding is that the request was to remove it from the agenda. To the degree that that is the request regardless of how it's phrased, then that is a motion. If the concern is that the item before the council is improper and not properly constituted before the council, that matter would be brought up at the time that proclamation is considered so that the defect in the proclamation can be considered.
So the process.
Your original ruling back when this started of saying that we hadn't gotten to that item yet, that would be the proper time when we get to the specific proclamation. At this time, what is brought before the council was the question of whether it should be considered at all. That did not get a second. It remains on the agenda. However, as I understand it, it's item six or seven on the agenda. When we got to that point, Councilmember Branstadter reserves the right to say that it's not properly constituted before the council in the first place for defects in the proclamation, because it does not reflect the will of the council, and it's come before the council as a council proclamation. That should be considered at the time it comes before the council.
Thank you. So at this time, we will move forward with the proclamation. This proclamation is presented to the, recognized in May 24th, May 2024, as Asian American, Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And if you would please join Councilmember Bell at the podium. Lou Pritchard.
Hello, welcome to all, and especially Lewin. Friends, please join me. I appreciate that. I am honored to present this proclamation as we celebrate Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So let's honor and recognize the rich cultural contributions and achievements, achievements of our AAPI community. Okay, I'm going to read all the whereas's for everybody. Whereas, in May, we take time to reflect on all, on, on and call special attention to the achievements and contributions of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders in our community, our state, and our country. And whereas, in 1978, Congress created Asian Pacific American Heritage Week in May to coincide with two milestones in Asian Pacific American history. The arrival of the first Japanese immigrants, May 7th, 1843, in the United States, and Chinese workers' roles in building the transcontinental railroad completed May 10th, 1869. And whereas, Lakewood's connection to the Asian community goes back decades, from welcoming immigrants to the area as they arrived alongside service members stationed at Joint Base Lewis McCord, to supporting business development and expansion endeavors within the city, and celebrating the many cultures, customs, and heritage of the kaleidoscope of countries from the Asian continent and Pacific islands represented in our community. And whereas, Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders comprise nearly 12% of the city's population, according to the 2020 census, and nationally are some of the fastest-growing racial and ethnic groups. And whereas, Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders are some of the most devoted community members who serve as leaders in our military and in law enforcement, as experts in the fields of science, medicine, and technology, as teachers, as distinguished lawyers, as innovative farmers, as business owners, as nonprofit executives, and as leaders within their community and beyond. Now therefore, the city of Lakewood, excuse me, now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims May 2024 in the city of Lakewood and encourages all residents to recognize the vital role Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders play in our community, and urges residents to visit the Asian Pacific Cultural Center to learn more about their programs and commitment to bridge communities and generations through art, culture, education, and business. Proclaim this sixth day of May, 2024, Lakewood City Council.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Honorable Deputy Mayor Moss and distinguished members of the council and staff, thank you so much for this wonderful proclamation in honor of all of us, especially those who, of us who live here in the city of Lakewood. Today, I'm, I'm very honored to have with me, in support of our appreciation for this wonderful opportunity of a gift to us in honor of our month of May, we have Lieutenant Colonel Albert Koshel. He's a board member of APCC and Filipino-American. We have Sinun Hem, Cambodian-American, and we have Dureth Pak, Cambodian-American, and Glenda Do Delao, Filipino-American, and also Tuet Nguyen, Vietnamese-American. And some of us, we live here in the city of Lakewood, and some of us have so many families here. We're very honored to know that the city of Lakewood is 16% of us living here and for the Lakewood population, and many of us, hundreds of us are here because of the JBLM connection. A lot of us are, are in the military, and we, we have retired and, and bought our homes here and have been here for so many years. And then our new ones are still living and coming here and be attracted to the city of Lakewood because we're so close to JBLM. So on behalf of Asia Pacific Cultural Center, all the organizations and businesses of Asia Pacific people, thank you so much to the city of Lakewood.
Thank you. If you would join us up front, we're going to have a photo op. The next proclamation is presented and, and declaring May 24 as Hunger Awareness Month. And for that, we call on Councilmember Mike Branstadter.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to read the council proclamation regarding Hunger Awareness Month. Whereas adults, children, seniors, active-duty military, and veterans in Pierce County sought assistance in feeding themselves and their families twice as much in 2023 compared to 2019, demonstrating a true hunger crisis in our community. And whereas it is important to address the food insecurity endured by the children in Lakewood, as the well-being of our children is an investment in our community's future health, education performance, and economic vitality. And whereas local food pantries are currently serving an average of 249,800 visits every month, from people struggling with unemployment, underemployment, and other physical and economic challenges. And whereas the Emergency Food Network must maintain its capacity distribute more than 14 million pounds of food to its more than 75 partner food pantries, meal sites, and shelters every year. And whereas rising food costs affect Lakewood residents and the local emergency food system, and have already resulted in increased visits to the emergency food system. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council to hereby proclaim May 2024 as Hunger Awareness Month in the city of Lakewood, and encourage all residents to support Hunger Awareness Month and recognize the Emergency Food Network and its allies for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to providing food for residents in the city of Lakewood in Pierce County. And it is proclaimed this sixth day of May 2024, and it is signed by all seven members of the Lakewood City Council.
For that, we will offer up Clara Ajang to present, to receive.
Oh. Well, you know, I really want to present this to you and for the work that you do, but also for the fact that, you know, it mentions that Emergency Food Network has many allies in this community that, that are faith-based allies, or service clubs, there are many just individuals that come in other organizations that send volunteers to work, work on this problem. And so I don't know anyone that isn't in favor of trying to resolve it and supportive of your work. So, you know, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Branstadter, Deputy Mayor Moss, and the rest of council for recognizing May as Hunger Awareness Month in the city of Lakewood. EFN's partners, which we have 75 partner food pantries in Lakewood, Tacoma, and the rest of Pierce County are currently serving over 249,000 visits every single month. Many of us want to think that the hunger crisis that we began seeing during the pandemic of starting in 2020 was hopefully over, but the reality is it's worse than it ever has been. In 2019, our partners served around 140,000 visits each month. So we are basically double where we were in 2019. Any one of us that goes grocery shopping, pays for utilities, pays for rent or housing, has seen that prices for basic goods continue to rise month over month. And for many of us, our income has not risen alongside that. And so many of our neighbors are facing the crisis of do they pay for a medical bill or do they pay for food? Do they pay for rent or do they buy food? And unfortunately, food is one of the easiest things to go without because you have to keep a house over your head, you have to pay for prescriptions to stay healthy. And so the partners that we work with are sometimes the only thing that is preventing a family from going to bed hungry at night and helping a child go to school fed in the morning. We recognize May as Hunger Awareness Month in Pierce County because 70,000 students are going to lose access to the breakfasts and lunches that they receive at school for free at a reduced cost. And so families are going to rely on food pantries even more to get through the summer months. This Saturday is the letter carriers food drive. We encourage everybody to put a bag of food at their mailbox. They should be getting bags in the mail sometime this week. And if you don't get a bag, you can still put out any bag that you have. And our amazing volunteers, many of whom live here in Lakewood, and our postal carriers will pick up that food and will sort through it and get it out to our neighbors. And we're also having a tour at our new warehouse at the end of May, which was generously supported by the city of Lakewood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And a few meters down front, we do a photo. Next, we have a proclamation recognized in May 5th through May 11th, 2024, as Drinking Water, as Drinking Water Week. And for that, we're going to have Councilmember Pearson, who will present the proclamation to Gary Barton, Commissioner, and Don Stanley, Pumping and Treatment Department Head, the Lakewood Water District, and present the proclamation.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, so if I could just have Gary Barton, the Water Commissioner, and Don Stanley, the Pumping and Treatment Department Head, come up and join me for this proclamation. I appreciate it. Whereas, water is a fundamental part of our everyday lives and serves as the basic support system for all life on our planet. And whereas, water is our most valuable natural resource. And whereas, drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of our life, quality of life of our residents enjoy. And whereas, tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, and support for our economy. And whereas, hard work is performed by the entire water sector, whether designing capital projects, operators, ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps. And whereas, the pandemic shone a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs. And whereas, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas, the residents of our city are called upon to help protect our waters, our sources, our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now, therefore, it be, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims May 5th, 2024, through May 11th, 2024, as Drinking Water Week. And urges all residents to observe the week with activities to enhance awareness about drinking water and the benefits of drinking water. Proclaim this sixth day of May, 2024. Mayor Jason Whelan, along with the rest of the city council members. And I just want to say thank you for doing very important work, and it's something that many of us take for granted every day, being able to open the tap and have clean water, and something that we, you know, is so important to everyone. So thank you.
Would you like to introduce yourself? Go ahead, tell, tell people a little bit about what you do.
Yes, again, Don Stanley, the Pumping and Water Treatment Department Head at Lakewood Water District. It is very important, the job we do, and it's the people who work at Lakewood Water District, the men and women every day, from the office staff to the field staff, people working 24 hours a day. It makes it all worthwhile that we are able to give the community safe and reliable drinking water.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Mary Moss and distinguished council members for this proclamation of Water Week. Throughout history, access to water has been key to successful and healthy communities. Last year, Lakewood residents used on average 7.5 million gallons per day of clean water for drinking, sanitation, recreation, irrigation, fire protection, and business needs. Water Week is meant to bring attention to the skilled workers that help make this happen to communities across the country and to the value of water around the world. The World Health Organization estimates that roughly 2 billion people around the world do not have access to clean drinking water. Fortunately, the residents of Lakewood Water District do have access to reliable, clean drinking water due to the efforts from the dedicated staff at the Lakewood Water District, and with the support of our partners like the city of Lakewood. Thank you so much.
Stand us down. For photo. The next proclamation is recognized in May 6th through May 11th of 2024 as Affordable Housing Week. And for that, I call on Councilmember Mike Branstadter, who will present the proclamation to Amanda, the Executive Director of the Pierce County Affordable Housing Constortion and present proclamation. Please allow for photo. Are we here?
But, but good, good evening, everyone. And I, again, it's my pleasure to read this proclamation for Affordable Housing Week. City of Lakewood, whereas all people should have access to decent, safe, and healthy affordable housing, and the escalating housing affordability crisis impacts all civic sectors and interests essential for vibrant community living. And whereas, one-third of all households in Pierce County, over 100,000 in total, are currently cost burdened, spending more than 30% of their income on housing, and have difficulty affording other necessities such as food, transportation, and medical care. And the supply of homes and the number of people experiencing homelessness remains at crisis levels. Whereas, the city of Lakewood recognizes the impact that lack of affordable housing has on public health, transportation, racial and social justice, economic development, child welfare, access to education, including pursuits of higher education, and family well-being, all of which impact the social determinants of health and welfare. impact the social determinants of health and welfare of residents. And whereas the availability of stable, affordable housing provides a foundation for family well-being, reducing the risk of family separation, and supports positive child development. And whereas to address the shortage of affordable housing, the city of Lakewood urges nonprofit organizations, funders, private developers, government agencies, and businesses to create cross-sector collaborations that will attract resources and increase efficiency to address social problems and support the further development of more affordable housing to build a healthier community. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim the week of May 6 through May 10, 2024, as Affordable Housing Week in the city of Lakewood, and affirms its commitment to expanding affordable housing through innovative cross-sector partnerships and collaboration. We recognize the indispensable role of affordable housing in achieving comprehensive community well-being, and call upon all sectors of the community to join and recognize the importance of housing affordability, and to actively participate in the ongoing efforts to make affordable housing accessible for all residents, thereby strengthening the fabric of our community for generations to come. And this is signed by Mayor Whalen and the remainder of the city council. And we really want to thank you and your organization for being one of the organizations that takes the lead on trying to build these partnerships that can look to make that happen. And we're your partner in this, and wish you and us success.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Branstadter and Deputy Mayor Moss, other council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Again, I'm Amanda DeShazza. I'm the Executive Director for the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium. We are a nonprofit. We made up of 60 members and advocate and educate for more affordable housing across Pierce County. So that's why we're here tonight. We are incredibly grateful to the city of Lakewood for proclaiming Affordable Housing Week. This proclamation serves as a powerful acknowledgement of the critical importance of affordable housing in our community. And by shining a spotlight on this issue, you're not only raising awareness, but also demonstrating your commitment to creating a more equitable and inclusive community for all residents. So throughout this Affordable Housing Week, our agency is proud to be hosting a series of events aimed at engaging our community in fostering meaningful dialogue around affordable housing. And we're really excited to invite all of you to participate in those events. We've got, gosh, 19 in all across the week. And so if you're interested in joining us, you can find out more on our website, tpcahc.org. In closing, I wanted to express my heartfelt gratitude to you all and to the entire community for your unwavering support of affordable housing initiatives. Together, we can make a positive impact and ensure that every individual has a place to call home. Thank you for this proclamation, and thank you for your dedication to our shared vision of a more equitable future. And I just have to say, hi, Jeff. Thank you so much. And Jeff is amazing to work with. We chat all the time, and he's just been so supportive of the affordable housing work that's going on in the city of Lakewood. So I had to say hi to my friend.
Thank you. If you'll join us down front, we can get a photo. Our next proclamation is to recognize May 6 through May 11 of 2024 as a police, as a, as our Police Officers Week. So for that, I'll ask Chief Smith if he would join me down front. In show of our solidarity and appreciation of what our police officers do on a daily basis, it is my honor to read this proclamation. And it reads, "And whereas each May during the month, during the weeks surrounding May, May 15th, our nation salutes the American men and women who put their lives on the line every day to maintain public safety and to hold accountable those who break the law. And over the last three years, the COVID-19 pandemic placed first-place responders at additional risk, dramatically impacting how they interact with the public and presenting challenges never faced before. And whereas there are more than 900,000 sworn law enforcement officers serving in the community across the United States, including the 99 dedicated members of the Lakewood Police Department. And whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 17,000 injuries. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have been killed in the line of duty, including four members of our Lakewood Department in 2009. And whereas it is with heavy hearts that we mourn the heroes taken from us only because they chose to serve, and we, we rededicate ourselves to carrying forward that noble legacy. And whereas the name of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Office Memorial in Washington, DC. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council officially recognize May 12 through May 18, 2024, as a National Police Week in the city of Lakewood, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement offices in our community and in communities across the nation. Proclaim this sixth day of May, 2024, signed, Mayor Jay, Mayor Jason Whalen, and all of our city council members."
Deputy Mayor, members of the council, I want to thank you very much for taking the time to recognize National Police Week. It's something very close to us as officers who recognize that on the Mall in Washington, DC, that their names etched and engraved there of some of our friends and fellow colleagues who once served. So each year during this timeframe, 25,000 to 40,000 law enforcement officers, survivors, and friends of law enforcement converge on Washington, DC to mourn the loss of the various officers from that, from service. And so we take this time to honor them. We take this time to mourn their loss, their loss, and we dedicate our time and effort in remembering them. Today, I'll be presenting each member of council with a, one of our Never Forgotten tokens. And so we hope that you will take it and cherish it. It's one that will recognize our officers. This year, the Lakewood Police Department will have seven of its members riding in the Police Unity Tour, which is a 300-mile bike ride from New Jersey to converge on Washington, DC, to meet with the other thousands of officers who will be there to recognize and mourn the loss of those who have gone before us. So I appreciate you. I'm very thankful to you, and I appreciate so much the proclamation to recognize law enforcement. Thank you so much.
Please stand us down front for a photo. So, thank you. The next, we have the next proclamation is recognizing May 19 through May 25th as Public Works. And for that, we have Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could have Weston, please join me up here. Thank you. So this proclamation is for our Public Works Department. And Weston, thank you for joining me up here. We are so excited to celebrate Public Works Week, honoring the dedication and the service of those who keep our city running smoothly. So, whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to public health, quality of life, and the overall well-being of people. And whereas, services like water delivery, sanitary sewers, storm drainage, solid waste collection, road design, and construction, and ongoing infrastructure maintenance and repair would not be possible without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals. And whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of Lakewood residents greatly depends on these types of facilities and services, and the community is grateful for the dedication of the city's Public Works employees. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through 25, 2024, as Public Works Week in the city of Lakewood, and do hereby recognize the contributions which Public Works personnel make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, proclaimed this sixth day of May, 2024, signed by Mayor Jason Whalen and the city council. Thank you, Weston, so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much on behalf of the Public Works Department. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. We appreciate that you are recognizing National Public Works Week. We also appreciate the support that we receive from council for both the Public Works Engineering Department, as well as the Capital Infrastructure Program that is funded year in, year out. The theme for National Public Works Week is advancing quality of life for all, and we can truly say that's a result of the, the hard work that's been done in our city since incorporation. Here in the city is another year of infrastructure construction. The city has just completed the JBLM North Project. We now have use of the Ardmore-Wittman 93rd Project. It'll be striped soon with the signal installed later this summer. Hipkins Road is out of the ground, and before we know it, asphalt pavement will be put down. 84th and Pine Street is nearly done. We're just waiting on the delivery of the traffic signal poles. And then we're looking forward to the start of the Far West Drive Project, Safe Routes to School, new sidewalk that's, or sidewalk that's missing, and street lighting, as well as later this summer will be the Silicon Boulevard corridor from Weller to 87. And that isn't naming everything that's on deck for this year. The city continues to deliver a very robust infrastructure program year after year. I want to again thank the council on behalf of the Public Works Engineering Department for recognizing National Public Works Week and for your support of infrastructure projects that advance the quality of life for all in the city of Lakewood. Thank you very much.
The next proclamation is recognizing May, 2024, as Building Safety Month.
Madam Deputy Mayor, again, I'd like to repeat my point of order that this proclamation is not properly promulgated as a council proclamation. It does not have the concurrence of the entire council.
Is there a second? I am in a position to make a decision, and I would honor the six council members that did sign the proclamation. Madam Attorney.
Acting Mayor Moss and members of the council, Heidi Walker, City Attorney, and unfortunately tonight, parliamentarian, which seemed like an easy job until tonight. So I will tell you, in your council rules, you define what a proclamation is, and it's not super helpful because what a proclamation is, is a statement of the body. It's not necessarily binding effective law or anything like that. And proclamations as defined in MRSC are the same thing. They're simply a statement or a declaration by the body. Here tonight, we have a council member who's brought forward a concern that he does not concur in the statement of the council. So your options, normally you don't vote on proclamations. Normally they're, you know, it's Water Week. People are generally willing to sign off on Water Week. This, however, has not got the full support of the council. However, if it was something that was voted on, as the acting mayor points out, it would have the six votes because six council members signed off on it. So the options before the council at this time would be that you can choose to vote on it and give it the effect of a vote, which means that there may be a council member whose voice is not properly reflected by it. You have the option of converting it into a mayor's proclamation, which it's not truly just a mayor's proclamation. It's the voice of six council members who have signed off on it. Those are the two options that I have for you right now. From a legal perspective, it is, it's a statement. It's a legally sustainable statement. So I, I don't have something where I can say to you, yes, you can knock this down. And in fact, my understanding, having reviewed the proclamation, is that everything within it is within the authority of the city staff to do. And under the RCW as an optional code city, it does constitute unlawful interference for the council to give specific direction to members of the staff. So that's as much as I can tell you about it at this point. I would be happy to try and help guide you through this. I will tell you, I looked around a little bit, and I've not found previous examples because proclamations are supposed to be happy, and they're supposed to reflect the will of the whole council. This one clearly does not. But you do have the option of adopting it as a mayor's proclamation. And that would be not necessarily fair to the other council members that signed, but it doesn't have the full concurrence of the council either. So that might not be any more fair of a reflection. I would be happy to try and guide you through this. That's what I have for you right now.
Thank you. So to my council members.
Councilmember Pearson.
I just have a question. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would, I would like to read the proclamation. I would like to read the proclamation. Is there, if I read it and remove Mr. Brandsetter from the proclamation, is that acceptable and not recognize his signature at the end?
My understanding is that he has not signed it because of concerns that he had with it. You are certainly welcome to note in your proclamation that this is a reflection of the majority, but not all of the council.
What do you, you're not worried at all?
The only thing I can tell you is that you are on the record, so you want to make sure that anything you're conferring about is available to the public to be heard.
Did you have a comment? So I'm going to recognize the six council members that did sign and ask Mr. Pearson if he would join, if Mr. Jeff Gumm would join, House Councilmember Pearson at the podium.
All right. Now we got through the complicated stuff. I just have to read. So Jeff Gumm is the Housing Program Manager, and this is a very, another very important proclamation as the building official, the housing program manager, and other city staff take great strides to, you know, promote safe housing, safe structures, and have gone through great detail of work and effort to perform abatements and clean up some hazardous structures around the city. So it's thank you to them. Whereas, City of Lakewood recognizes that our community depends on the role safety plays in our homes, buildings, and infrastructure, both in everyday life and when disaster strikes. Whereas, our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of public servants like the building safety and fire prevention officials, engineers, builders, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these are experts in the built environment who create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, play. And whereas, we invite our residents to join in supporting and recognizing these experts alongside the Washington Association of Building Officials and local chapters throughout the state, representing the state of Washington in national and local matters of public safety. And whereas, modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as snowstorms, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the Washington Association of Building Officials and International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, Mission Possible, the theme for Building Safety Month 2024, encourages all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas, each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Whereas, the suspension of investigation fees for anyone who submits a permit application during City of Lakewood Building Safety Month from May 1st, 2024 through May 31st, 2024 will lead to voluntary compliance and increase safety of buildings in the city of Lakewood. And now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim this month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month in the city of Lakewood and encourages our residents to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities proclaimed on this sixth day of May 2024. Mayor Jason Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, Brian Pearson, Tristan LaRocella, Paul Bokey, Patty Bell. And I will present you with proclamation. Thank you. Do you have a couple of words?
Very much. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I am accepting this award, our proclamation, on behalf of the building department staff and building official who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. So this is for the permit texts, the plan reviewers, the building inspectors, all of the team that goes along with it. It's a small but mighty team. It's a team that has kind of a fairly large impact in the community and works well with the citizens. And I would like to say again, it's an honor to receive this proclamation, and I think it's a great time to reflect on the opportunity to learn more about the city's building division and how that building division helps to build a vibrant and safe community for all Lakewood citizens. Thank you.
If you'd join us down. Okay, next we have our youth council report. Just given our report tonight.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Moss and council. My name is Janita Benevente, and I am a student at Harrison Prep. Youth Council is currently finalizing the details for our May 25th Youth Empowerment Summit and wrapping up our 2023-2024 year and beginning to discuss our plans for the 2024 and 2025 year and the initiatives we'd like to focus on. At this time, I'd like to ask city council to weigh in on their ideas for what they'd like us to focus on for our youth and the community as a whole.
So your question was?
Our question was to get your guys' ideas on what you'd like for us to focus on for the youth and the community.
Okay. Any suggestions from my council members? Councilmember Bell.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think you guys have already come up with a lot of really great topics. I know that you're focusing on things like mental health, and I saw that the council roundtable, a lot of those questions asked very, very in-depth. I think you guys are on the right track. It sounds like everything you're doing is going in the right way. So I personally don't have any suggestions. I think the direction is fabulous, and I also, I would like to, I will be there. I know you guys asked for participants for your roundtable, the little parts that I think are going to go around in the cafeteria. So count me in on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pearson.
I'd like to echo Ms. Bell's comments, and I think you guys are doing a great job, lots of hard work from a smart group of young folks. So I will also be there to participate in the summit as well. So thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, I would certainly agree with that. You guys do a fabulous job. I appreciate you guys, and I will be there to support when needed, okay?
Thank you.
You guys have done a great job.
Thank you. All right. I would now like to turn it over to Louis.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Moss and council. My name is Leo Weechen. I am a junior at Lakes High School. The Youth Council expressed their desire to include our city council members in the May 25th Youth Empowerment Summit. Many of our youth view our city officials as rock stars or movie stars only accessible from afar. The goal for the event is to create a space for youth to gain access to our local elected officials in a casual atmosphere where they seem approachable and human. The idea is to offer students at the option to participate in speed dating with council from 11:20 a.m. to noon in the cafeteria at Harrison Prep High School. Council members will rotate between the table of four to six students, where they'll have five minutes to have a conversation with the youth and to discuss one of the following questions. Facilitators will guide the process along and record the answers shared. The questions were drafted by Youth Council and provided to you recently. This is the end of our presentation. Do you have any questions?
Okay. So I will ask our city clerk if she would see that that information gets on our calendars for participation. Thank you. And I did attend the artwork at St. Clair Hospital from the students at Lakes High School. You guys do a fabulous job. Thank you so much. Thank you. Next, we have our Cobble Park School District report. Is there anyone here from Cobble Park School District? Oh, there you are.
Deputy Mayor, I do not see a school board member in attendance this evening, either in the council chambers or virtually.
Thank you. Next, we have our public comment. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by virtual, live, virtual, or in-person comments. Comments sent in advance by mail or email to Brianna Schumacher, city clerk at 6,000 Main Street Southwest in Lakewood, Washington, 98499, or B. Schumacher at cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically. The clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance. Please note that there is a public hearing this evening. Testimonies specific to the 2024 carry forward budget adjustments should be done under that portion of the agenda. So Madam Clerk, are there any advance notice?
Deputy Mayor, the city council received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Each, please, members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter related to the business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. And virtual comments, if you would like to provide live, virtual, public comments, you will need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling by telephone 1-253-215-8782 and enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373. Or visit the zoom.us and enter the meeting ID, which is again 868-7263-2373. And upon entering the meeting, please enter your name. Use the raise hand feature to be called upon for those participating by calling in by phone. To use the raise hand feature, please press star nine on your phone. When you are unmuted, you please provide your name and city of residence, such as Councilmember Pearson, Lakewood, City of Lakewood. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. Outside of public comment, all attendees on Zoom will continue to have the ability to virtually raise your hand for the duration of the meeting. You will not be acknowledged, and your microphone will remain muted except for when you are called upon. So each week, we alternate the in-house participants and later the virtual one. So tonight, we will start with in-person, and we'll start with those that have signed in. So the first person that we have, someone signed in, and then they scratched their name off, so I will move forward with Ms. Jan G.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor Moss and members of the council. I am Jan G., and I'm president of the Interlochen Lane Condo Association, which is located at 112th and Interlochen and Idlewild. And I'm appearing today on motion 2024-30. It was great that the Public Works interim chair was here because I was able to get a quick minute outside and talk. But, excuse me, we have no issue with the actual letting of the contract, but we have concerns regarding the project. And I have raised those concerns with Mr. Busidge, who I understand now is retired, and he has arranged for his staff to peer with our condo association annual meeting and go through the plan. However, my experience in trying to be involved in an early process with the planning department on the development across the street, it was clear decisions were made very early on that were not in the best interest of our community. So I'm hyper alert on this project because this project has the potential of impacting the lighting and noise mitigation that we currently have in our community along 112th and Idlewild. And despite all my phone calls to Public Works, I find that the design is completed, and they were out marking our trees the other day for removal. So my hyper diligence here is to come to you too as my public voice to say, we have concerns, and we hope that the mitigation of these items of noise and traffic and lighting are resolved before the project starts. We understand we're a growing community, and we have to make way for more housing and more cars. But we also believe that the city council and our planning commission has tried very diligently to include mitigation. So I'm asking you to consider that and be our spokespeople. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Next person that signed in, just Sue. If you would present your last name in this city, please.
Is that mandatory, Deputy Mayor?
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
I have concerns for my safety from what I've been through already to put my full information. If it's not mandatory of the council, I'm requesting not to do that.
Can you say where you live? What city you live in?
My comment is in regards to a correlation between, or a contract, I would say, between the town of Stillaclem in Lakewood, but it happened in Lakewood.
City Attorney. She has a reason to not disclose her.
Your Honor, I'm familiar with Ms. Bland, and we've spoken, and I do believe that her comments are pertinent to her perspective of city business.
Thank you. If you would pull the mic closer to you, we can't hear you. We can hardly hear you. Just turn it to you so it's closer.
Like this?
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
But you are soft-spoken. Can you guys hear?
I'm in a lot of pain.
I'm so sorry.
I can't take it.
Okay, try that.
I want to first start out, allow, and whether the City Council can do anything about it or not, I think it's important that it's on record because you are in contract with, the City of Lakewood is in contract with the town of Stillicum. And I want to put on record that the, that the police, they call themselves public safety, but they're police for the town of Stillicum, didn't, or at least in my position, they did an illegal investigation. They didn't do a complete investigation. They didn't even include my report to the investigator. Instead, the, the responding officer, Ashworth, decided to take my five-page report and put it into, I think it's three paragraphs of his own words, which was actually opposite of what I was requesting help for. I was assaulted by a physician in the town of Stillicum. I wound up going to the ER. I reported it immediately when I got out of the ER to the police, and that's what they did to me. I didn't know until later that the prosecutor here in Lakewood didn't receive my report. I went through three times requesting it to be looked at again. And Ms. Heidi, yes, I did speak to you. She, I did report it to her. I went above the prosecutor and went to her asking for help because I believed that my rights were violated. And to that extent, that still has not changed. I understand Heidi explaining to me why they thought they couldn't win in court. I somewhat understand that because I have proof of, of physical proof now. I can't even work, and this is through an LNI. Like, there's government agencies involved that have recorded what happened to me. I feel my rights were completely violated, and it was done by the police. I spoke with Chief Yabe. I even had, with his consent, a recording statement by him saying that he would make sure the prosecutor got all my information, which he did none of it. I also have an email of him saying he would do it. He never did it. I did it multiple times as I found out the things the prosecutor didn't have, which was everything by me. Not my written response, not my typed up response, nothing. I had to three times request for it to be looked at. I do want to mention before I forget, the city manager, I appreciate him, Caulfield. I know I'm not saying his name right. I don't have his name in front of me. But he was the only one that actually pointed me in the right direction. I appreciate his help. I have done everything that he said with no response to the first person. I went all the way up to the mayor. I spoke to the mayor, Murray, today, which he decided to, I told him my complaint, I asked for his help, and he decided to, when he thought we hung up, he literally forgot to hang up the phone. So I was listening to him. I'm putting myself on mute and listening to everything. He shuffled around, and I heard him typing a little bit. Then he hung up the phone. Within fifteen seconds, he called me back and said, oh, I talked to Chief Yabe, and you know, everything he said is correct and everything. So this is what I'm dealing with. I've already went all my chain of commands, but they're involving the City of Lakewood. So I believe that you have every right to know what's going on because this is legal. Don't care anybody says this is legal.
Thank you. Thank you. Our city clerk has taken that information, and we will advise. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Mercelini.
Hello. Good evening to everyone, and my name is Abraham Mirjalili. I'm a resident of City of Lakewood.
One moment, please. Madam Clerk, can you put a volume on that, please?
Hello, everyone. My name is Abraham Mirjalili. I'm a resident of City of Lakewood. And first, I want to thank everybody who has been supporting us in the past year. Second, since this week is a public work week, I thought that, I, I talked about that. And of course, they know many other issues that they came up. That was not my plan, however. First, I want to actually, I was surprised to see that this council, finally, there is somebody who disagrees with another. That I, I look at that as something positive. Hopefully, that would continue on because if that have happened in the past, when the council member Bransader was looking for a cheap property in, on May two thousand twenty three, the following month, our property would not have been condemned for two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which after four years of supposedly trying to resolve the this boundary dispute, which was actually manufactured in order to devalue our property and somehow take it away from us while deceiving us that maybe there was some negotiation going on and something to resolve this issue, this would not have happened. Aside from that, speaking of public safety, we actually, when we came, we wrote to the city in order to, to fence the area that the Pierce County has taxed us, told us, came before the Board of Tax Appeal and said, you own it, you must pay taxpayer for it. We did more than a decade, so did other people before us. And then there is a boundary dispute, except that the surveyor who, whom was hired by the city claims that he was never asked to survey our property, nor he ever did. So he doesn't even want to accept responsibility for what he has done. While his survey shows that there is actually a survey of our property, more than one of them. But speaking of public safety, please do not trust what you hear. You go to them, this, the same thing happened to us will happen to you. I can give you more cases. Of course, this, I have only three minutes, as you know. But I would be more than happy to provide you with those that there are other people who have tried to do something, but they couldn't. They wanted to destroy a house that they could have built it, they could have bought it and updated, but after we have done, they want to take the public money to condemn it, and then they say, we don't have enough houses. They want to build nearly twenty public parking and condemn a house in its place. Thank you very much.
That's all the people that have signed up on this list, but it does not preclude you from speaking. If you have something that you would like to discuss with the City Council, please step forward. Seeing none, we will move to the virtual. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor, we have Dennis Haugen.
Mr. Haugen, you're on.
Dennis Haugen from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I gave you a couple of books to read. Probably nobody wrote, read them, but some of them are very relevant to what's going on today. But I think that one of the things that's getting out there is that, that some of the people who are radicalizing our youth are coming inside of education systems. There's only one way to deal with that. Put cameras in every classroom so that parents, grandparents, and responsible persons can have a password, look in on what's happening to their children in the classroom. And of course, there's security things that would have to be, be dealt with, and, and that could be a password to only the parents or only certain people who have responsibility. But a lot of these riots, property damage, whatnot, actually, there's only a few states that have a problem with this. Because actually competence, competence in dealing with the situation is what's important. And part of that competence is we seem to have, well, look at, look what happened with attorneys. It's, the legislature somehow decided attorneys no longer have to pass a bar exam. It's crazy. We need some attorneys out there who understand the law. Because it seems like what we've got now is a free-for-all. You're a sanctuary state. Classic. Running around calling illegal immigration undocumented immigrants. That's crazy, crazy. We need to have, whenever there's a situation that, and it could happen to, in Lakewood, it happens Seattle and whatnot. You don't want to lose the businesses because of, you know, all kinds of unlawful activity. But there needs to be coordination. So when you have the State Patrol, the school leaders, everybody needs to be on the same page about what is breaking the law. That's not hard, is it? Thank you.
That's all the hands that I see raised. Madam Clerk, are there any others?
Deputy Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Thank you. For that, I will announce that the public comment period is closed. Next, we have our consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of April eighth, two thousand twenty four. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand twenty four. C, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of April twenty second, two thousand twenty four. D, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of two million eight hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and forty dollars and eighty-one cents for the period of March sixteenth, two thousand twenty four, through April fifteenth, two thousand twenty four. E, approval of payroll checks in the amount of three million two hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars and three cents for the period of March sixteenth, two thousand twenty four, through April fifteenth, two thousand twenty four. F, motion number two thousand twenty four dash twenty-five, accepting a donation from Amazon in the amount of eight thousand in support of South Sound Military and Community Partnership Special Events and Initiatives. G, motion number two thousand twenty four dash twenty-six, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Pacific Rim Talent for summer entertainment. H, motion number two thousand twenty four dash twenty-seven, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Lakewood Building Maintenance LLC for janitorial services at City Parks. I, motion number two thousand twenty four dash twenty-eight, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with B.C.R.A. Inc. in the amount of four hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-six cents for services related to the Niaza Road Southwest Project. J, motion number two thousand twenty four dash twenty-nine, approving the two thousand twenty-three Transportation Benefit District Annual Report. K, motion number two thousand twenty four dash thirty, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Cascade Right-of-Way Services in the amount of fifty one thousand nine hundred and ten dollars for services related to the one hundred and twelfth Street Southwest and Idlewild Road Project. L, motion number two thousand twenty four dash thirty-one, authorizing the award of construction contract to Secanti Inc. in the amount of one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand for the Far West Drive Safe Routes to School Project. M, motion number two thousand twenty four dash thirty-two, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with R.L. Allia Company, increasing contract authorization for the JBLM North Access Improvement Project Phase Two. N, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk. One, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of March twenty-six, two thousand twenty four.
Thank you. Are there any items on the agenda that anyone would like to remove? Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as written?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, the consent agenda passes. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing and appeals. And this is the date set aside for public hearing on the two thousand twenty-four carry forward budget adjustment. So for that, I call on City Council, Deputy City Manager, Tarkas.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. State law requires that a public hearing be held in conjunction with the budget adjustment process. Following the state law, we are holding the public hearing this evening on the proposed carry forward budget adjustment. The next step is for the City Council to consider and adopt the proposed budget adjustment on May twentieth. The budget adjustment makes the following types of modifications to the current biennium. It revises the estimated beginning fund balance to reflect the final two thousand twenty-three ending fund balance. Adjustments to incorporate items previously approved by the City Council, appropriate projects funded by grants and contributions, continuation of capital projects and new allocations as necessary. Over sixty percent of the budget adjustment is related to carry forward of projects for capital purposes or capital projects. And that is in a separate fund outside of the general fund. The general fund, if the City Council were to approve, were to approve the budget adjustment as proposed, the general fund ending fund balance would be maintained. So we would maintain the two percent contingency reserves as required by state or by our own financial policies, five percent ending fund balance reserves, five percent strategic reserves, as well as maintaining the two million dollars set aside for Economic Development Opportunity Fund. The proposed budget adjustment, if approved, would result in a general fund ending fund balance of seven million eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, which is the twelve percent reserves plus the two million for the Economic Development Fund. The other funds are special revenue funds, so those adjustments are being funded by specific revenue sources dedicated for those purposes. And that concludes my presentation.
Well, this is a hearing appeal, so I, public, public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or by live, virtual, or in-person. Send your testimony in advance by mail or email to Brianna Schumacher, City Clerk at six thousand Main Street Southwest in Lakewood, Washington, nine eight four nine nine, or B. Schumacher at cityoflakewood.us. Testimony received up to one hour before the meeting has been provided to the City Council electronically. Madam Clerk, are there any received before?
Deputy Mayor, we received no public testimony on this public hearing in advance of this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Testimony, testimonies is limited to three minutes each to each person and must be specific to the public hearing topic. Virtual testimony, if you would like to provide live, virtual, public testimony, you will need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number, one two five three two one five eight seven eight two, and enter the meeting ID number, eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three, or visit zoom.us and enter the meeting ID number, eight six eight seven two three seven two six three two three seven three. And upon entering the meeting, please enter your name. Use the raise hand feature to be called upon. For those participating by calling in by phone, to use the raise hand paddle, please press star nine on your phone. And when you are unmuted, please provide your name and city of residence. Outside of the public hearing, all attendees on Zoom will continue to have the ability to virtually raise your hand for the duration of the meeting. You will not be acknowledged, and your microphones will remain muted except for when you are called upon. So at this point, we will start with us in, in-person, and the first person we have signed up is Mr. Mercelini. Since, are there anyone in the, since he's not available? If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this, please come to the mic. Seeing none, we will go to the Zoom. Madam Clerk, are there any hands raised?
Deputy Mayor, there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Seeing none, I would declare the public comment closed. So the resolution two thousand twenty-four dash oh eight, adopting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, July first, two thousand twenty-four to June third, the two thousand twenty-five joint meeting. I call on Mr. Jeff Gunn.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Good to see you again tonight. So before you, is a resolution to approve the two thousand twenty-four Annual Action Plan for CDPG and Home Funding. This is the final step in the process to providing it to HUD for approval. That does occur no later than May fifteenth, so this process is, is quite timely. Bring you up to speed where we are to date. I did check before this meeting to see if any of the funding allocations are finalized in HUD's documents and any of their paperwork that I've, that I've been checking, and I was not able to find anything finalizing those. So we're still working with what we are anticipating for funding. Should those funds be approved in a, at a different level, staff has recommended that those. Staff has recommended that those funding allocations be approved on a pro rata basis based on what the final allocations actually become. So to kind of give you a quick synopsis, this was initially brought to council on March 25th. There was a public hearing held on April 15th, 2024 before council. There was also a 30-day comment period, March 29th to April 29th. There were three additional comments that were provided during the, the 30-day comment period. One comment was in support of housing development and homebuyer activities. That was provided by Maureen Fife from Habitat for Humanity. There was a comment for the need for annual energy and rental assistance programs. That comment was provided by Jesse Black of Spring Brook Connections. And there was a third comment in support of housing preservation and affordability through homeowner rehabilitation, and those, that comment was provided by Amy Hoyt of Rebuilding Together South Sound. So the funding allocations that we're looking to allocate tonight would be CDPG in the amount of $535,000 in an anticipated allocation. There is a total of $392,000 in program income for a total allocation of $927,000. For the home funds, it's a total anticipated allocation of $290,000. There is $68,754.91 in program income to be reallocated. So the home funding allocation would total $358,754.91. With that, I turn it back to council if they have any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gumm? Seeing none, all in favor? Can I get a motion approved?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 2024-08.
Second that?
It's been moved in second, so the motion passed. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Any unfinished business, Mr. City Manager?
There is none, Acting Mayor.
New business?
There is none.
So we move forward to reports by our City Manager.
Good evening, Acting Mayor Moss, council members. Got a handful of updates I'd like to share with you. First off, Lakewood resident and longtime volunteer Ellie Wilson, who served on your Lakewood's Promise Board since 2012, is going to be stepping down. Matter of fact, her term is up later on this month. We thought it would be important to recognize her, given her impact and longevity serving on this board, which has really done some great things in the community. And so it's our recognition, our recommendation that she be recognized as part of your May 20th regular meeting with a certificate of recognition. So unless I hear otherwise from the council. You heard from the youth council this evening, and just a friendly reminder, the Youth Empowerment Summit is scheduled for Saturday, May 25th. And the youth summit, they did, they transitioned from this panel discussion to a quote-unquote "speed dating" format, and the reason for that is they would like to have a little bit more hands-on and, and interaction between the City Council and the youth attending. And what they're asking is for you to be there between 11:20 and noon, so I'll just say, you know, the one-hour period between 11:00 and noon. Though I do know they would really appreciate if you could show up for the whole event as well and just observe what's going on and their whole agenda and the various topics that they'll be having a discussion on. The, the way they would like to do it is to have City Council members, you know, would rotate individually between, you know, a table of four to six students, and some questions will be provided to help facilitate that dialogue at each table, and then there would also be facilitator to help move things along as well. But again, please let myself or the city clerk know, and we can keep the youth council appraised of which members of the City Council plan on attending that event. And again, it's on Saturday, May 25th. Want to, again, recognize our finance team. Last week, GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, both the US and Canada recognized the city with its Outstanding Achievement Award, and it's in our popular annual financial report for 2022. We are now moving forward with actually preparing the 2023 edition, and this is the seventh consecutive year that we've been recognized with this. This is a follow-up to, in March of this year, where GFOA recognized us with our Certificate of Achievement and Excellence in Financial Reporting for our annual comprehensive financial report. So the popular report is a little bit, is a more succinct version of that. And again, just a great testament on these prestigious accolades, which is a testament to the hard work and the dedication and professionalism of our finance team, as well as their commitment to transparency, accuracy, and excellence in financial reporting, and also is a very strong reflection of the leadership of our department directors, and of course, the mayor and the council when it comes to managing our finances. Wanted to let you know that the Maureen Howard Place, which is the former Candlewood Suites, is in the process of transitioning to an emergency shelter that is going to be owned and operated by Lehigh, which is based out of King County. The city is, we're, we're ready to issue a certificate of occupancy for them to open, so hopefully maybe later this month. And we're just waiting on the fire district, they got a couple of outstanding items, some punch list items that, that they've asked Lehigh to work through. But once that gets resolved, the city will be able to issue a certificate of occupancy, and they'll be up and, up and running. On April 27th and 28th, that was a very, very busy weekend, and one of the events was our community cleanup, and I want to thank our assistant to the City Manager and our policy analyst, Michael Vargas, for leading that effort. It was at least 417 vehicles showed up, which was a very good showing for that weekend, and that's just another way that folks can come and take advantage of some spring cleaning. And we'll be doing another one in the fall that we, as, 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 as we always do. I previously reported that we were going to be applying for transportation funding, federal funds through the Puget Sound Regional Council, so we're in the process of doing that. Actually, I believe we may have already hit the send button. The three projects was Military Road from Edgewood to 112 slash Far West. Originally, we were looking at requesting construction funds. However, as part of the design phase, which is currently underway, it became known that there's going to be a need for some right-of-way acquisition within that corridor. And so actually, our grant application is going to be for right-of-way funds totaling upwards of $1 million. Now, in the past, until PSRC changed its rules for this grant cycle, we would have been able to apply for both right-of-way and construction, but they no longer allow that. So we'll be applying solely for right-of-way as a part of this biennial process, and then unfortunately, two years from now, we'll have to come back for a construction ask. However, we are moving forward with construction, a construction ask on 100th between South Tacoma Way and Lakeview, and then a, some overlay funds for 100th Street between Bridgeport and Lakeview. And again, that's all in conjunction with kind of our local rules here in Pierce County. All three very, very competitive projects, I, I might add. I think we have a good chance of getting funding for at least one, maybe two, and possibly, you never know, three. Might hit the jackpot. On the Parks and Recreation side, I want to recognize our team. The City of Lakewood is going to be receiving a 2024 Spotlight Award from WARA, which is the Washington Recreation and Parks Association. Our Parks and Recreation and Community Services Director, Mary Zosworth, and many of our team are a part of that professional association. The recognition is for the development and renovation of Spring Brook Park, highlighting the, you know, the excellence and achievement that went into that project, not just Phase One, but also Phase Two. And if you haven't been down there recently, it really has transitioned into a tremendous community, tremendous community event. And I know Ms. Zosworth and/or members of our team will be in attendance to accept the award at their upcoming conference later this month in Vancouver. Also, on the park side, the Chambers Creek Canyon Trail Project, which is a Pierce County-led project, however, it is in conjunction with also the cities of University Place and Lakewood. Phase Two is moving forward. Pierce County recently opened the bidding process for that project. And long story short, Phase Two, which is going to be the creation of a two-and-a-half-mile trail within the canyon, as well as a trailhead here in Lakewood at Zircon, as well as some trailheads over in University Place as well, is expected to get underway in early January, depending upon how the bids come in. Also, just want to alert you that Pierce County has tentatively scheduled a groundbreaking event for Friday, May 31st, for distinguished guests, which of course would include the mayor and the city council at 1:00 PM, and that would be down at the bridge that was built as part of Phase One between Lakewood and University, University Place down by the Kobayashi property. We would enter from the Phillips side, the University Place would enter from, from, from their side, kind of a North Korea/South Korea type thing. They stay on their side, we stay on our side. So, I have a, I have a little story there. When I used to work for University Place, I have a knowledge of how that whole property acquisition came about. It's a great story. But I'm so pleased to see the, you know, the progress in opening up that whole corridor, you know, just for, you know, the general public to be able to get down there and just really enjoy nature. So again, more, more, more to follow, more to follow on that. Your Arts Commission, again, continues to be very, very busy. Long story short, they have selected recommended locations for signal box artwork, and I know I shared that with you late last weekend, if you hadn't seen it yet. And so 10 city signal boxes, 10 more have been identified. Once these are completed, that will bring the total from, to 32 out of 80 of our traffic signal boxes. Pretty impressive. And actually, it seems like more than that, just driving around the city, because the ones that don't have it seem to have blended into the background, but we don't want to, we don't want to jinx it, we want to get them all done. So over the next few years, we'll continue on that. So their recommendation will be coming forward as part of an update here in the near future to this, to this, to this body. But again, they went through a very good process in selecting their, the various artists, and again, some really cool stuff. That's, 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 that's coming forward on that front. I know several of you had attended the 15th Annual Cops vs. Teachers Charity Basketball Game and the silent auction that was sponsored and led by the Kiawandas of Clover Park. It was over at Lakes High School, the gym, back on Friday, the 26th of April. I do want to point out that the cops did beat the teachers. It was, it was a bit of a shellacking, actually, but it was all in good fun. It was all in good fun, and it was for a very good cause. As a matter of fact, the folks who were in attendance, they, they passed the bucket, if you will, and raised over $2,100 for the fallen Washington State Patrol Trooper Christopher Gad, whose life was cut short tragically back in early March as he was on a DUI call. And that was just tremendous, and I know the, the head of Washington State Patrol was there as well, John Batista, and he was very moved, him and some of his staff. So just wanted to point that out. And then also wanted to recognize two of our police officers, Nile Teklemarian and Daniel Pyon, because they suited up and got out there on the court, and they did a fantastic job representing LPD. And again, it was for a good cause, and looking forward to next year's event. On Thursday, June 20th, Select USA, which is an organization that is, looks to seek locations for businesses within, you know, nationwide, and they have a, some, kind of a organization that operates here in Washington State out of Department of Commerce. They're going to be touring our local region here in Tacoma and Pierce County on June 20th, and they're going to be visiting the urban waters in Tacoma, the port, Point Ruston, also the University of Washington. However, they are also going to be visiting here in Lakewood, Clover Park Technical College, specifically the Advanced Manufacturing Building that opened up a couple of years ago. And our Economic Development Manager, Becky Newton, will be front and center on that, and we want to give you a heads up because you, the mayor and the council, you are all invited to that as well. And if you would like to attend, please let us know. It is, I think they expect to be in Lakewood about, I think about 11:00 AM or so, but more, more, more to follow on, on, on the specifics. And then, at the end of the day, there is a reception down at the Tacoma Art Museum, and this is Thursday, so Thursday evening, June 20th, which is actually, many of us, some of us will be over at AWC for the annual conference, but there'll be an event down at the Tacoma Art Museum for, you know, the folks here in Pierce County, including elected officials. So again, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And Ms. Newton will actually be putting together a little goodie bag for all the folks that are going to be getting the tour to, you know, get the word out on, on why Lakewood is a good place to invest, invest monies. I also want to extend appreciation and thanks to Tim Motto, who is one of our Associate Civil Engineers. He, for many, many years now, has been leading our Commute Trip Reduction Program, CTR, which I remember when it was first set up, and we're still doing it, and that's fine, we're mandated to do it. But Tim does a great job, you know, sending out information on a fairly regular basis about what we can do to utilize, you know, alternative commute options and things like that. And that's hard, because we're just so focused on being in a single occupancy vehicle. But certainly in the past year, his efforts have paid off, and that Pierce Transit has recognized Lakewood of one of their many bronze-level best commuter businesses for 2023. And I want to recognize Mr. Motto for his leadership there, because without him, this, 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 this wouldn't have happened. Also, you might have seen either an email or something in the mail, Waste Connections has, has instituted countywide that folks can now put their food waste in their yard waste if they so wish to do that. And so just wanted to pass that on. We did have a brief conversation with them and let them know we'll try and, you know, in a, in a, I don't know if we're going to get it in this Lakewood connections, but maybe a future one, just to help them get the word out in Lakewood. But it seems to have already spread by fire, actually, that folks can, can now, can now, can now do that. So I think the raccoons will be happy, because they do know how to climb those containers and open the lids and get in and turn them over. I've seen them do it. I've seen them do it. So we need to be careful what we ask for when we're, we're doing things like this. So that'll be interesting. Not trying to be a wet blanket on that, just saying. Lastly, as it relates to upcoming events, this Thursday, Pierce County, there'll be the annual Pierce County Law Enforcement Remembrance Event, and actually, LPD and Chief Smith and his folks are this year's sponsoring agency that's over at the Bethany Baptist Church over in, in Puyallup. RSVP is not needed, but, you know, if you can make it, that's a really nice event to go and, and, and attend. Next Wednesday on May 15th, and this is one that I would ask you if you do plan on attending, and I know they changed the time, Lakewood Communities, Communities and Schools for Lakewood is having their annual fundraising breakfast event, and it is from 9:00 to 10:30. It's a little later than, I think in the past, it's been from 7:00 to 8:30. But I know at the staff level, a number of us plan on attending, but if you do plan on attending, please let us know. I know we're trying to put together a couple of tables to, again, support communities and school. A week from Saturday on the 18th is our youth fishing event, will be at American Lake Park this year. Also, that same day, JBLM is having Armed Forces Day in Open House on, on base. And then the following Tuesday, May 21st, at 6:00 PM over at the Fort Stilliken Park Pavilion, the mayor will be having his coffee house event, and the point of discussion there will be the very exciting comprehensive plan process that we're going through right now. And then the next day, on Wednesday, May 22nd, at 4:00 PM, Clover Park High School will once again be hosting their annual Arlington Project, which is an event that has been in place since 2008, very, very moving event. You'll begin to see the crosses and Star Davids go up here in the, the, the near future, recognizing and honoring our fallen service members who made the ultimate sacrifice so that we can all live and breathe free. And then the last item, again, just want to end with the youth councils, Youth Summit Empowerment Event at Harrison Prep, which again kicks off at 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturday. So actually, that means you folks will be up- So actually, that means you folks will be up front from eleven to noon. So you'll be the first on the agenda for them. So you're going to set the tone. You're going to set the tone. You'll set the pace for them. So with that, Acting Mayor, that's my report.
Are there any questions for City Manager? I do have a question. Do you know what's happening with the furniture store? It was closed and now it's opening.
I understand they're having a big discount sale. I I I don't. I know they kind of go back and forth. So but I don't often. If I learn of anything, I'll I'll let you know.
Yeah. Thank you. Are there any questions for City Manager? Here and none, then we move to council comments. Mr. Brian Staley.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Deputy Mayor. I did go to the elected officials' meeting for the South Sound Military Communities Partnership that it was better attended than ones that I've been to in the past. And it was a a good program. I think that the, you know, there was there's a networking and and seeing folks from around the region. But the, I think, one of the most significant elements of the program was Ms. Tobin from the South Sound Military Communities Partnership made a presentation to the group about the study and research that they had done regarding how to facilitate childcare businesses, being able to operate in the region to be able to go and do that. And that she she used Lakewood somewhat as an example for both some positives and negatives. But there was a portion of her program that dealt with what could be done within local municipalities, land use regulations that would make it easier for someone to start and become involved in a in 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 a childcare business, to be able to go and do that. And that the abbreviated portion of her presentation that dealt with that may be of advantage for for us to hear or the Planning Commission to hear with an idea of trying to look at, is there something we would want to put on the Planning Commission's two thousand twenty five work plan? And for us to discuss in our on upcoming discussions that we talked about, about how to incentivize businesses in in development, that that we should not discount how to incentivize childcare businesses is that is, I think, a business sector we want to encourage in the city. So and and she would be a a good resource for us in that she's done extensive, some extensive research into 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 that situation. Last Friday, I did attend the South Sound Housing Affordability Executive Meeting. And the 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 main, the main event there was they were discussing their budget for next year, because they approved their budgets early, because the way that their budget works is they put forward a budget, but then it has to come to the councils of all the cities that are members for approval. And the 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 major discussion there really was, should there be a four percent increase in the membership allocation charged to cities? Or should it not? And the conversation ranged from some cities that are actually asking for a decrease. Most looking to say that they'd really like to just keep it the same as at two thousand twenty four levels for two thousand twenty five. And that that there's a meeting on May thirty first that will actually approve sending that to all the cities as a as a draft budget. And it's that that's going to include a keep it the same, a no increase, a no increase option to do that. The other action that they took force is that they have an advisory committee around affordable housing, and it's divided into three groups of people. A a third of the committee is made up of people who are developers. A third of it is made up of people who are in the advocacy for affordable housing. And then another third is made up of people who are current or recent consumers of affordable housing, people who have been residents. And that last group has been difficult to fill. They've been to find people who are in that category, but that also have the time and the wherewithal to persist, participate in an advisory committee meeting. So there was an action taken to include in the two thousand twenty five budget, being able to pay those folks in that strand of the advisory committee a stipend. And the discussion centered in around a seventy five dollar per meeting stipend for folks that agree to be serve on in that capacity on that committee. And you'll we'll we'll see that in the budget that comes forward to us that they that they propose to do that. I unfortunately am going to miss the the next meeting and be gone for ten days. So I will I will I will miss the the program at Bethany Church regarding fallen officers from Pierce County that and I will miss the Communities and Schools breakfast to 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 do that. But the last thing is, is that Caitlin Miller, Caitlin Miller is a member of the Youth Council, whom we nominated for a scholarship to A W C. She has been informed by A W C. That she's not a recipient this year. However, we will be forwarding to U W T., which is the school she's going to go to, the seven hundred and fifty dollar scholarship that we, in conjunction with the Lions Club, have put together, and 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 that will be going going forward to do that. And so while it's disappointing that she didn't get it, it's that we are actually still going to be the city since the inception of the Quality Community Scholarship has had the most recipients. So and and we we tend, we tend, we we tend to average having at least one every other year. That and and so that's a good program for us to to do that. And that's 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 all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. See here, yeah, we had a couple weeks here of stuff. Attended the fifteenth Daniel Cops versus Teachers Basketball Game. And just I would echo City Manager, great turnout, great event. Really fun family event, took the kids and had a great time. The Lakewood Rotary Beer and Wine Festival, that was a good event, was put on, raised a bunch of money. So that was another good one. We had the Parks Appreciation Day and the ribbon cutting or the first pitch throwing out, along with the second pitch throwing out and lots of pitches getting thrown out. If you saw the video, there was balls flying everywhere. So that was a great event, great field. All all of the other fields there that got the AstroTurf or the turf fields, they all look wonderful. I drove back, drove by last weekend. They were full of people playing baseball, so the parking lot's full. People are getting out there, you know, rain or shine, games aren't getting canceled anymore. So that really great improvement out there at the park. Another, I guess, went to quite a few school things. The Lakes High School Student Center or Student Celebration of Art at Saint Clair Hospital, that was really impressive. Some really, really inspiring and and impressive photos and editing, you know, that was done to the photos was on showcase there from the students. And their their work was was framed, and it'll stay there at at Saint Clair's for a whole year, I I hear it. And so if you're near there, or unfortunately, if you're at the hospital for something, hope it's not too bad. But if you get a chance, I think it's in the near the emergency room, there's a hallway full of the photos. And they're they're pretty impressive to go look by. They'll be there, they will be there for the year until, I guess, they do another event. And then at the end of it, the students get to take the photos home, and they have a wonderfully framed photo of their work. So pretty, pretty impressive. Last Friday, I went to the Gravely Lake K twelve Academy Tour. And that was really, really showcased some outstanding work that the Clover Park School District is doing over there to reach people, you know, the 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 young people of all ages and really meeting them, you know, where they're at and and providing an environment and classrooms and virtual classrooms and virtual teachers and people in person to just get those folks to, you know, have a successful environment, whatever that looks like. We toured the elementary room, and and they were all remote at the time. And and one of the kids was in a car, you know, driving somewhere, but he's there, you know, participating and and, you know, doing what they can to get people engaged, keep them in school as much as they can and, you know, and get them through the curriculum and to be able to 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 graduate. And so that's really, it was way different than a normal school. And it just shows how, you know, how much that's needed this day and age. And so it was really impressive. They've got meals there for people that didn't have meals, and they can take some home for the weekends if they don't have them at the at home, you know, if they're concerned about that type of thing. So it was it was really great. So I just want to applaud the Clover Park School District. They they put on a great, a great tour. You know, Superintendent Banner and his team did a great job. So another thing that I went to last couple of weeks ago was the Pewters Town Regional Council Meeting, the executive meeting. And there were a lot of concerns about the finance, you know, portion of of where things are at. And and there, you know, some some concerns about current projects and maintenance projects and really related to Initiative twenty one seventeen. And I guess that this is going to be on the ballot next fall, fall two thousand twenty five. And there's some, you know, there's some implications on if that doesn't pass, that a a lot of these projects that would have had funding from this Climate Commitment Act would no longer be. And so something to pay attention to and, you know, see how that impacts us. So Executive Dan Meyer asked a couple of great questions. One, just about, you know, the the transparency of the state of the finances for the Climate Commitment Act and really what it costs taxpayers and things like that. Because it's, I mean, it's a significant amount of money that's being put forth. And so that was a good to hear those kind of comments, just to 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 let it be known, you know, what what we're actually paying for, you know, in something like this, and to really get that out to the voters as best they can. So and that's it for the past meetings. I have. Let's see, this Thursday, I I will be attending the Lake City Neighborhood Association Meeting. And unfortunately, it contradicts the Pierce County Law Enforcement Remembrance Ceremony, so I won't be able to attend that. So, yeah, busy, busy month, and looking like some more busy times in May.
You just began it. Thank you. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So yes, a lot has been going on in Lakewood the last couple of weeks, and I believe all of it was mostly recapped by fellow councilmembers. I did take advantage of the community cleanup, and the bells did load up a truck and get rid of some stuff. So that was very good. It's always a fabulous event, so I appreciate it so much, along with everything else that's been happening. And all of the proclamations today, it was so nice to, I know we had a lot of them. It was great to see the community here, and it was great to honor those different types of proclamations today. And I wanted to say again about the Youth Empowerment Summit, I will be there, and I'm looking forward to that and participating in, what was it, the dating, something, speed dating, something like that. Yeah, style. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Before I give my comments, I wanted to address one of the comment, public comments made tonight in reference to motion two thousand twenty four dash thirty. I know I Public Works people do a thorough job when they go through these processes. I just wanted to see if there's anything that was submitted afterwards, if there's anything that needs to be changed, if that could be addressed. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you. So I would first want to congratulate the city for being recognized as the bronze level of the best commuted business for two thousand twenty three. Congratulations on the job well done. I too took the tour of the Clover Park School K twelve Academy. That was amazing. I agree with Councilmember Pearson. What really stood out to me the most was the facilitator for special needs students. She was made for that position. Absolutely awesome. And I did do the tour for the art show. I was, I loved doing to those, watching those, looking at those Lakes High School students do that every year, and it is fabulous. They do a great job. I did attend the Wine Festival, which was a lot of fun. And the last I heard, it was in excess of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So they they were very successful in doing that. And that's not the final count, I understand. I will be speaking at the Scholarship Dinner for Clover Park Technical College, and that's on the tenth of May. And L M C C. Will be presenting a scholarship to Clover Park Technical College in support of supporting our students that are in need. Spring cleanup, I went to Springbrook. And I was impressed with the condition that park is in and the work that's being done there. I really liked it. I'm going to go back and visit the, it's beautiful. I'm going to go back and visit the the garden, because I saw some tomatoes being. So that's my favorite. So I would go back to visit with that. But it was it was a good day. The ballpark, our presentation was awesome. I did get my ball to my person. I was impressed. And let's see, ballpark. That's all I have. If there anything for the good of the order.